Suppose we can go ahead and proceed with our meeting. It's 4:09 this afternoon, and we're going to meet and talk about a few things, including our investment policy, a few changes we've made, and get our investment report from Marquette and Associates. So first thing we should do, Agenda Item Number One, is our public comment. So I was just going to open it up for any public comment, if we have any.
No one signed up.
No one signed up.
Any public comment?
Okay.
Shocked.
All right. We will go ahead and consider our public comment period closing. And all, I just want to apologize a little bit. I'm getting over a little bit of a cold, so if I sound a little slower or anything like that, you know, just please forgive me. Next item on the agenda is approval of our minutes. They are on Tab One of the packet in front of you. Assume everybody's had a chance to read and look over those. Anybody have any comment or corrections or anything? Okay. Seeing none, we just need to take action and approve those meeting minutes. All who approve, can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose?
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
Oh, can you make a motion?
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved and seconded. All those who approve, can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? It's been properly approved, and our minutes have been properly approved. Next, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three on Tab Two of your packet, which is the modification of the investment policy. And some changes were made to the investment policy as a result of our last meeting, which you'll notice on Page 11 here, I believe, is the original investment policy. And on page, well, it's Page 11, too, I guess we're replacing it, but you'll see some track changes on the draft copy in red where it kind of shows the reallocation that we're doing from U.S. fixed income to cash. Mr. Tenold, do you have any comments, you or Tim, have any comments on that?
No, Tim and I talked, and his suggestion was to change the policy. That's about all we need, and it looks like that gives us enough reading room to stay within policy as we go to cash every once in a while.
Yeah, the idea is to hold a small amount of cash just to pay incremental bills. If you do that, you're not going to be hitting your target at zero. So to be at a target of 1%, doesn't materially change any sort of anything from an investment perspective, but will increase compliance.
Sounds good. Any board members have any questions or thoughts on those changes to the policy? Okay. If everybody's good with the policy, then can we get a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Considering that, all who are in favor, can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose? Effectively, today, the policy has been modified. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Craig. And our fourth item on the agenda is our review of investments by Marquette Associates. Mr. Tim Burdick is here to give us his market update and to talk to us a little bit about how our portfolio is performing. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us, having me. I'm going to pull this up on the screen, although you have it in your packet as well. As I normally do, do this in three parts. First is a brief market environment, discuss what happened, try to answer any questions you may have. Number two, review the investment portfolio itself. We are about 97.5% allocated at this point, so that went frankly very well and according to plan, so we're in line with your policy at this point, with one small exception. And then, as we've been doing, I wanted to introduce you to one of the managers, you know, through the document that we made an investment with. We did Partners Group last time, we're going to do Parametric this time, just so you start to get an idea of the type, different types of investments that are held within the portfolio. I will aim to be brief, but do jump in with questions as I go through the documents. And I have pretty much nothing but good news, so I should probably just stop my presentation, ask if you have questions. And it starts on this first page, just a summary of the various indexes that are utilized to track the markets. U.S. stocks are on the top, international stock markets are in the middle, and bonds are on the bottom, and you've got the third quarter and then the calendar year-to-date. Everything is aimed to the right, which means everything is positive so far this year. Now, there are pretty significant differences as you go through it. Tech stocks, the magnificent seven, are still leading the charge. That's the Russell 1,000 growth, that's up 24.5% through the first nine months of the year versus, say, small-cap stocks, Russell 2,000, up 11%. So it does still matter where you are invested in the market. Not everything's moving up, you know, the same. International has been good despite the wars, despite the challenges over there. You can see in the third quarter, everything was up, everything was positive, and year-to-date, you're up in the 12% to 15% to 18% range. And then, bonds had a very, very good third quarter. Fed came out, I mentioned that, that they're going to start cutting interest rates. They made the first cut of 50 basis points, probably two more are built in this year. They're going to do more next year. The bond market yields go down, bond prices go up, and you can see the bonds responded very positively, up 4%, 5% in the third quarter.
Tim, this is related, but not. What pushed mortgage rates up a little bit this past week, given the drop in...
The 10-year actually went back up.
Right.
So when the 10-year, which is what's tied to the mortgage rates, that was as low as 3.5, and right now it's resting at 4.
But what drove it up? I mean, both.
What drove it up?
Because I know it's off the Treasury, but I was curious.
It is the idea that the Fed isn't going to decrease rates as quickly.
We hope.
Yes, as the bond market had priced in.
Okay. That's what I thought, but yes, thank you.
So again, what the Fed is doing here, this is just what's built into the market currently. So we had that 50-basis-point move. Somewhere between two and three additional rate cuts are projected for this calendar year of 2024, but with the idea of gradually, over the next 12 to 18 months, going down to around 3%. That's what the Fed has come out and stated as their neutral rate. Again, the market was kind of based on 12 months, which is why it was lower. Now they're thinking, and the Fed speak, is that it'll be somewhat slower, so it might be more like 18 months before it gets down to that, what they term to be a neutral rate. So again, cash in the portfolio, you just approved a whopping 1% cash allocation, but for 15 years, you were earning nothing on that. Now you're earning, you're still up, you know, 4.7, 4.8 on that money. Question generally comes up, when the Fed starts cutting interest rates, is that good for the market? And my typical consultant answer is it depends. Last six times it's occurred, three times it was good, three times it was bad, and it basically comes down to that second column from the left, was there a recession that followed? When there's a recession, more often than not, the markets are negative. If we are managing a soft landing, which is frankly challenging to do when you're trying to cut interest rates by 2.5%, normally, historically, you'll fall into a recession. If they are able to stay out of that, over the next 12 months, the S&amp;P has tended to do very well. I mentioned the magnificent seven, the tech stocks that are leading the market, who currently represent almost a third of the S&amp;P 500 index of the large-cap market. These are the Amazon, Alphabet, Nvidia, Tesla, Facebooks of the world. On the left-hand side, earnings associated with those seven stocks have been outstanding. On the right-hand side, the earnings of the other 493 stocks in the S&amp;P 500 have been uneven. First quarter, they were actually negative, second quarter somewhat positive at 6%. That simply doesn't compare to what's happening on the tech side of the world, up 50% in the first quarter, 35% in the second quarter, and expected to be 20% to 30% range. So again, that's, the stock market is just one example of not everything is moving up and correlated well to each other. The tech stocks, although they didn't have a good third quarter, are still up significantly this year and really still driving this whole thing. As I mentioned previously, just a couple slides ago, on the non-U.S. side, the markets in general do tend to be quite positive, again, sort of in spite of some of the geopolitical challenges. The one I'll point out here is China, second from the left, was up over 20% in the month of September. I'm sure most of you read about it. The Chinese government decided to direct money directly into the stock market in a variety of different ways, essentially propped it up, and it worked. And the market reacted accordingly, and it was up over 20%. Again, this is complete market interference, but that's sort of the rules of the game when you invest in a stock market such as China. So it was negative last year, it was negative through the first half of this year, and that's part of the reason why the Chinese government decided to do it. But the emerging market index, the emerging market world, it's about a quarter of that entire index, so it's meaningful. It's still a meaningful market, so most managers were underweight China because of the challenges, economic challenges they've been having, so they missed on some of this, but it's a little different. And then, a couple, two slides on real estate. You have a 5% real estate allocation. Your office space, office space across the country, on average, has now gone down 40% from its peak. So if you had a building that was appraised at $10 million, it's now worth 6% on average across the country. And it's not necessarily vacancy rates, and vacancy rates move slowly because of long-term leases. Vacancy rates are high, 15%, 16%, but they've been here a couple times before. So what we're really looking for is what's on the next page, is transaction activity. The markets, partially because we didn't really know where interest rates are going to be, so we didn't know what cap rates should be longer term, there hasn't been a lot of real estate transaction volume over the past year, year and a half. So what's happened is when these office buildings are appraised and the price is lower by 40%, frankly, we really don't know if that's true or not. It's what the appraisers think. And if the appraisers don't have comparables, they tend to write things down. This has happened the last two times. We've had a downturn in the real estate market, institutional side of the real estate market. What we need are transactions, what we need are people to, companies to actually buy and sell so that we can find out what these things are actually worth. So we're watching transaction volume closely. This is just first and second quarter because this is all provided on a pretty good delay. But what we're looking for is, on the real estate side, is for this volume to start occurring, we can actually figure out what all these buildings are really worth. Should be, should be a slight positive for your real estate management, for the portfolio. And I thought this was mildly interesting, following up on why you have an investment in private equity. This is the number of private and public, private is PE-backed or private equity-backed companies in the U.S. Wilshire 5,000 is the, basically, U.S. public companies. And as you can see, over the past 15 years, the number of public companies that are out on the stock market with material volume, so you can trade them, has ebbed and flowed, but really hasn't changed significantly in 15 years. If you're a company, you either go private or you stay private. Now that they have access to capital markets, much better than they did, say, 15 or 20 years ago, more and more companies are either, again, just staying private and not going to the public markets and not doing that for liquidity event, or actually, some companies are deciding to leave the public markets and go private. So from an opportunity set as an investor, you have more in the Wilshire 5,000 here, the public market, but where the opportunity set is growing and continues to grow is on the private side. So you do have a private allocation that was started with Partners Group. As this portfolio continues to build over the years, we'll probably look and bring suggestions and ideas to you to potentially increase that. And it's really built, in part, around this idea that this is where managers have more opportunities and more ability to add value.
Tim, can I ask you a question about that?
Absolutely.
So what's driving a lot of companies to pull out of public and go in private?
Regulatory issues, mostly. It's less expensive, it's easier to run a private company than it is a public company.
And they're willing to give higher returns to investors who take a chance on a private environment?
Can't be.
Yeah.
It can be. And the reason that quite often companies went public before, again, was access to the capital markets. They don't need to do that now, the private capital markets, private debt and private equity are obviously automated now and more robust, so they can get the liquidity event they need without having to go public.
Thank you.
So if I can turn to your portfolio, it's a few pages, stop at page, third page here. This is a market value page, which reflects the portfolio as of September 30th. And as I mentioned, this is 97.5% complete. So when we came to you about six months ago and with an implementation schedule, you asked us to essentially take our time getting the money invested, reducing downside risk if we had a bad year in the markets, trying to make sure that this resulted in some positive earnings for the first year out. It's been doing that. So the only thing that's different and outside of policy is Baird is 2.5%, 2.7% higher. Percent of portfolio is actual versus policy percentage. And Gollub, which is your private debt, is about 2.5% under. And that's simply because Gollub's private, they call the assets, they called half of the money, they haven't called the other half yet. It's up to their discretion within a two-year timeframe to do that. So you've got it in public debt versus private debt. So when Gollub calls it, it's very easy. Baird's a mutual fund, we can simply sell the mutual fund and provide them the liquidity. So we're trying to match the underlying betas or market risk the best we can by having it in bonds. So you're essentially, this is how we want to hold it until Gollub calls it, and then we'll be in line. So again, as I talked about, this is the actuality of what we've been talking about for nine months now. From the initial asset allocation, when we rolled through that, implemented the investment policy, I brought you the implementation schedule. We talked about, we originally had it in three months, you said let's extend it to six months. We followed that. It worked well. So in terms of building of the assets over the course of this year, the dollars were received in March and put to work, most started to be in the month of March. Numbers at the bottom here, since inception. So total, between what was received in March and then the additional dollars that came in in July, net cash flow into this portfolio is at $63.1 million down here in the corner. Investment earnings, realized and unrealized, over the past, say, six months or so, are about $3.7 million, bringing the total to 60, just under $66.9 at the end of September. That 3.7 in gains equates out to, since inception, a rate of return of 6.1%. So the 1.4 at the top for the total composites, the month of September, 4.2 is the third quarter, 6.1 is since inception. So for us, since inception is since those dollars came in into the custodial account. Obviously, money was earned on the capital previously in the bond portfolio. If it's red, here, I'll go to the actual manager page. If it's red, it indicates that manager or that composite underperformed its benchmark for that specific time period. If it's green, it refers to outperformance, so green is good, red is bad. But red is what we look at, keep it simple.
Not a blind kid.
Sorry. It's just a whole bunch of numbers right there.
He could probably do the math.
I'm really not too concerned about you. When a manager is underperforming, again, these are very short time periods. We've only had this to work for a couple of months. But we know the managers well enough to have an understanding, and there are often very viable reasons why managers are underperforming, especially over a short period of time.
Tim, kind of a question, just something...
Sure.
Something I always run into, especially in an account where money is being added to the account. Sometimes on benchmark reporting, depends on whether or not you're using a time-weighted or a dollar-weighted, and it's hard to really do that on the benchmark a lot of times. So, you know, like, for example, if the policy benchmark is up, you're, let's see, let's just look at the three-month benchmark right there on the top line.
Yes, sir.
You know, we haven't had all the money, you guys haven't had all the money for the full since-inception time period because we had a hit come in in July or whatever, right? Our next deposit. So are you factoring that in?
Yes, in the policy benchmark. We talked about it, I think, two meetings ago, and I wanted to make sure it was in the minutes, that we were adjusting the policy benchmark based on the asset allocation on the first of every month.
Okay. Good deal.
Yeah, so we kept it in line.
All right.
Correct.
All right.
Now, frankly, not that big a deal.
Yeah.
But yes. So each month, we, just to say on the first of the month, because we're measuring this on a monthly basis, we looked at the actual allocation and did a policy benchmark for that as it moved forward. Otherwise, you'd have large discrepancies, and it would just be a lot of noise, frankly.
Good, yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Just want to make sure, all good.
These are your liquid managers. On the next page, the less liquid managers, some of them just got to work infrastructure with JP Morgan, the private debt I manage with Gollub. So again, these reports aren't very interesting so far because we've just got a few months' worth of data, but they are positive, which is the goal. We have a liquidity profile here, just showing for each of your managers whether they can be traded on a daily, monthly, quarterly, or what is truly illiquid, and that's the Gollub on the far right. So essentially, almost 70% of your portfolio, 68.9 is truly next-day liquid. Another 15% is monthly, so a little bit more than 80% of your portfolio, which, again, in this instance, frankly, isn't that necessary? Because you're making the grants once a year, and that's as the dollars roll in. So as we look at your portfolio and the asset allocation, we'll do that each year prior to the additional funding incoming in in July, and see if we want to recommend any changes. You don't need to be this liquid. So if opportunities present themselves, and if we think there's a risk-adjusted way to make some additional money, I see over time this portfolio perhaps becoming a little bit more illiquid, so you can get that illiquidity premia and make a bit more money. This fund is truly in a somewhat unique position versus what you normally see. And again, just as a proof statement, to make sure that we kept in line, the fees here, your fees for all of your managers, and then ourselves in the custodian, so the total investment manager fees are currently, at the end of September, on an annualized basis, at 35 basis points. So you roll our fee into it, U.S. banks fee in all, and it's 57 basis points. Now, as I mentioned, with each report, especially initially, and this is where I get a little investment geeky, and I might lose one or two of you, so, but I wanted to make sure that instead of just having names on a market value page, that you actually, and we started with Partners Group last time, you do get to meet and understand, at least at a high level, what these managers are doing. And I'll talk about Parametric, I'll do it just in about five minutes or so. Marquette, about 10 years ago, and it wasn't just us, but it was pretty easy to see that hedge fund returns were coming down. The premia, the extra alpha that hedge funds were generating in the '90s and early 2000s for a variety of reasons really wasn't happening, that you weren't getting that additional return. We liked having that income, that return stream in the portfolio, that diversifier, but we didn't like paying hedge fund fees, you know, 1% and 1.5% plus a performance fee for that stream of return. So we went out and we looked for something else. And one of the solutions that we've been utilizing is this thing called value-risk premia. And I'll explain what it is, and it's pretty straightforward. Essentially, and I'm only going to hit a couple of these pages again, just to make sure you keep track, I don't want to take too much of your time. Essentially, what they're doing is they take, let's say, a million dollars, and on the left-hand side, the base portfolio, 50% is kept in T-bills, so it's earning right now about 4.5%. 50% is invested in the S&amp;P 500. So right off the bat, your return is going to be half bonds, half cash, and half the S&amp;P 500. So in a market like this, if the S&amp;P's up, say, 20, I'll keep the math simple, you're getting half of that, you're getting 10%. Bonds are up 5, you're getting 2.5, you get 12.5%. Very systematic, very easy, very easy to implement. Well, that's not much of a product if they just do that, because anyone can do that. So they try to add some additional return through this middle, and it's an option overlay. So this is where it gets slightly geeky. What they're doing is they're selling put and call options on the S&amp;P 500 index. There is a need for what this portfolio insurance basically provides, is a lot of managers want to protect themselves, generally on the downside associated with the stock market. So one of the easiest ways to do it are to buy options. Well, you need somebody to sell the options. This is what Parametric does. They do it three times a week, and they price it, and it's all computer-driven. They price the options such that 85% of them expire out of the money. So basically, they get paid the insurance premia, this small amount for writing these options, and as long as the vast majority of them expire out of the money, you just keep the insurance money. If you go, by getting insurance through Allstate, I pay them every year, as long as I don't have a claim, they just make money. Same thing sort of happens here. If you continue to write options that are out of the money, and they're never in the money, and somebody can come and make a claim, you just earn that insurance premia. That's really all they do. So you get the return, half cash, half stocks, and then you get this premia of this writing of these options, and as they expire, you collect this additional return. And that's it. What it, sorry, I'm going to fly through, they're going to tell you all about the markets. If you come forward to this page, on the upper right-hand corner, you can see how they've done. So defensive equity, net of fees, just go down to the bottom, inception, they've made about 9% a year. If you just had money in the S&amp;P and T-bills, you earned about 8%. So you got that 1% premia for writing the options. Hedge funds, the index for hedged equity over that same time period's up a little less than 6%. So it's doing better than just being in the market, it's doing better than being in hedge funds. And down here, with a little less volatility, 8.1% versus 8.5%. So again, getting quanti or geeky, their sharp ratio, their risk-adjusted return is higher. We can get all this and not have to pay the 1% or 1.5% plus, it's 29 basis points, and that's it. We chose, this is monthly liquid because it's cheaper, it's in a commingled fund, we could be in a mutual fund, but I think it's 45 basis points now, so we don't need the money, so we saved some on fees and made it monthly. So that's about it. Using it for is a hedge fund alternative, which is transparent, inexpensive, and over time has generally performed better. Seems pretty straightforward. So this is 5% of your portfolio. It's there to help protect on the downside because it's not fully into the stock market. it's not fully into the stock market, provide a bit of diversification, because the writing of options is different than anything that your other managers are doing. So it does provide a little bit of diversification as well.
Tim, how are you showing this in our, in our, from our investment policy state, you know, allocation look? Are we attributing half of this money to the fixed income side, and half to the equity side, or is it all fitting into the alternative sleeve?
It's all fitting in the alternative sleeve. Because of the option writing on it, because if things go do-go sideways, they could eat into that, that principal, that 50-50 mix.
So, Tim, help me understand, so are we, are we collaring these? We're selling calls and puts on both sides, so it works as long as the market's stable or moving up in the direction we want. And the option spreads are such that we're collecting a premium on both sides?
Correct.
Or are we collaring them and spreading the call side, and offsetting that with the put side that's a little tighter, so that we can make a difference in the premiums on, on what we're paying versus what we're selling?
Yeah, see, and we're selling here on both sides, so we're not actually creating the call, which is why they need to be out of the money the vast majority of the time, which is why you're pricing it to be out of the money, which significantly decreases how much money you can make by doing this, because you're not collaring, because you're not limiting yourselves, you're not offsetting one with the other. Collar is a much more, kind of a traditional way of doing it.
Yeah.
So this way, you really want to buy, to be selling them out of the market, and there is a pretty good market for these sorts of, you know, these, these terms, such that what, when this doesn't work, is when things get really volatile very quickly.
You just hope that they expire before that time comes, in theory.
Correct. Or, and you're also, because you're buying in three days a week, you're buying into that increased volatility, so you're getting some of that additional premia as the volatility increases. So you're going to be paying on some of the options that are out there, that you bought at one price, but you're going to be offsetting that to a certain extent, because you're going to be getting that additional premia in the, in the increased volatility as it's happening. And they switched from, from doing this twice a month, from buying twice a month to three days a week, in order to absolutely do that. It's decreased their return somewhat. They used to say they could go out and get 2%, they realize they can really add about 1%. But what it did was offset some of that downside risk associated with, with the writing on both sides.
What's the average tenure of the options? 90 days, 60 days?
I believe in mostly 90-day.
Okay. But the bottoms are frequent, they're kind of flowing.
Yeah. Yeah. It's, they roll in every couple of days.
Very creative.
It's...
And it's 5%?
Correct. No, it is, it is not built to be a home run by any stretch. It is, it's, it's very risk-controlled, which limits, it does limit the upside.
Any other questions? Otherwise, that is my report.
I think you explained that very well, because I was looking at it earlier, I thought, what is this? It was something brand new to me.
This is why you don't have managers come in, sorry if anyone's a manager, because they'll spend a half hour, and they'll tell you all about everything, and that's hopefully what, that, I hopefully am explaining what you really need to know.
What other questions do we have from Mr. Burdick? Okay. Well, thank you so much for that informative report, Mr. Burdick. We'll move forward with agenda item number five, which is a grant process update. Mr. Tindall?
Yeah, it's in front of your notebooks, it's a calendar in there for the committee. It shows the, shows the process, set for this year's funding round. Right now, Angela, I think it's behind me, there she is, tells me it's about 20, 20 people active on the, on the software, filling out. One's, one's complete, the rest of them are completing, and as most people can anticipate, they'll all be at the last minute. They'll all be finished right at the beginning, so, but that's pretty good, that's pretty good participation. That's, that's pretty much the update. Looks like things are set well, and it worked pretty well last year, we'll see how it works this year, but it's like it's pretty strong, it's a pretty strong process.
Okay. Folks have to the end of October to apply, right? Hey, we got about 20 folks out there trying to...
About 20 out.
Okay. 20, not for profits, rather.
Right.
Okay. Just trying to look over your outline here quickly.
Craig, I meet with new nonprofits all the time, I don't know if there'd be any interest in sharing information for nonprofits, somehow with one last week I'd never even heard of, and really interesting work that they're doing, I don't know if that, or if you have the 20 that you want to work with, and you're not really looking to expand.
Well, no, it's open. So, yeah, if, if, the 20 just happens to be the ones that have got on the software now.
Okay.
But there's no, we're not selecting them. They're self-selecting and going in. We've advertised it, we put it out, that the, that the software open, the application process is open, and so it just so happens we have 20 that have applied so far. There'll, there'll be more.
There were 47 last year.
Right.
And a lot of those did come in towards the end of the month, for sure. But we've done a lot of press releases, we have put on charity tracker, done a lot of outreach, but any that you want to encourage, that you think might be eligible, any help getting that word out, that they're welcome to apply.
Is there a link you could send me that I could...
You bet.
Oh, yeah.
Because we have quite an email list.
Absolutely. Love to.
Be glad to do that.
That's a great idea.
Craig, do you have a list of the 29 made last year? You may have done it in an earlier meeting that I missed, but I...
We do, I can send that to you.
Would you mind?
Yeah. Yeah, not a problem.
They do have to have their complete application completed by the end of October, right?
Right.
Yeah. Makes sense. That was a question I had, was about the advertising, it sounds like we do, we posted on our website, and we issued a press release, so.
If you haven't been to the city's website on this in a while, it really is worth your time. We worked with City TV to put together a, like, a nice video, a how-to video with more information about the trust and the process. There is frequently asked questions, a lot of really good information that is, that is on there now, to, to help people. A lot of good application, and know what the, what the requirements are.
Excellent. Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Thank you, Craig, for that update. Any other thoughts or comments on the grant process? All right. We are plowing through this meeting, agenda item number six, other business. What other business do we have this evening?
Did we ever get our 501(c)(3)?
No, not yet. Still working on that. I didn't, I haven't had an update recently, so we got all the information to our attorney that he was going to file it, we were closing out year-end, and he wanted to have those numbers, the application, I don't know why, but he felt like it was good to get those, so we're, we're still waiting on that.
And we did present our annual report to the city council. I don't think they really had any questions about it or anything, so it's a fairly smooth presentation.
They were easy on you? I mean, they just let it go just like that?
They did that meeting.
He was that good, Rick.
I doubt it.
New council.
They had a lot on their, they had a lot on their agenda, I tell you. All right. All right. Well, if we don't have any other business, when do we need to schedule another meeting? I know we won't, I don't think we'll hear back from Mr. Burdick until next year, right? After Q4?
Correct.
So at the latest, I'm thinking, it's February, it takes you about six, six weeks to put your report together, six or eight weeks? Yeah.
It doesn't take quite that long, so, no, if you wanted to do a third or fourth week, say the 20, last week of January, that'd be fine with me.
Okay. Just didn't know if we needed to meet before then, which is perfectly fine with me, but I know at the latest, we probably need to meet some point in January.
Can't think of anything that would drive a meeting sooner than that. That last, oh, the second to last week in January is the week of the 20th.
Should we, should, should we consider, I mean, just looking at this calendar for the grant stuff?
Right.
Looks like they're going to be making their recommendations meeting, happening sometime between the 15th and the 30th of January. Should we just, should we wait? I don't know that we really need to, but does that, does it, if it doesn't really matter, should we wait till the first part of February, and that way that's done, and if we have to have any, I mean, it's not like we have to have discussion about that, but...
Ductile, the two.
They're required to have it by the 15th to the board, their recommendations. We targeted the end of January, just in case there was something in there that...
Yeah.
So, yeah, if we went to the first week of February, we could, I'm sure we'll, we'll be fine this year.
Yeah.
I don't think there'll be anything outstanding or unusual in the, in the process for grants.
So since this is a little ways out, can we maybe just get, would somebody be willing to just send out an email thread or something like that?
We'll have, bring to coordinate calendars.
Yeah. That way we can get, just let everybody kind of coordinate that way?
Yeah.
All right. Awesome.
Any other items we need to discuss this evening? Are we adjourned? Okay, hearing none, it is 4:50 PM. I suppose we need to make a motion to adjourn, is that what, that action, we, I don't know that we ever really do.
Technically, yes, you would want to do a motion second.
I'll make that motion, adjourn.
It's been properly moved in second, all in favor of adjournment. Can you respond by saying aye?
Aye.
Those who oppose, making us adjourn. Thank you for your time.